Don't ask Kim color.
I guess.
Never ask Kim color.
Yeah, and it's.
I do a lot of electrical work, but it's like I take a picture of it and I send it to somebody that can, they can like, like I put a piece of cable in the wall and say one, two, three, and I say, and somebody say, what color is that?
That's green.
And you gotta, and you gotta read the trailer. And then they tell you something and you're like, okay, cool. Do you wear that one? And you plug it in, you have both of the pieces because you have to screw it on. Yeah, really impressed.
We're gonna make a motion.
I hope so. As long as they all meet requirements. Let's do it. I make a motion. We're in, out, we're done. Get it done.
That's cheaper than the way you told me.
Well, there was another one for block corners and pins, but it didn't sit down.
Yeah, that was, block corner and pins would have been.
Okay.
Wait until after.
Well, we'll discuss. So when I go down here, like I'd go to my email.
Oh, what's up?
How do I find the email?
Thank you. I just asked you.
What?
Chad wants, every person who could have the same land.
He could, you know, he could come back and ask us. And I know he has called out, but he says, but since I'm getting along with the council on America, I could write down maybe I'll just.
Yeah. Screw this.
That's okay.
Mike, you're on, right?
There'd be no reason not to. He even wants to come and ask.
That's what, Aaron, money got charged for each one of those.
For each one of them?
Each one.
I haven't turned it on since I got it, so it's loading all the way.
People think they are anyways.
That's what he charged. Do I know that's what he charged?
Chad?
Chad, it was thirty six hundred. It's changed on both his law or.
I haven't, I haven't turned this on since I got it, so.
We must be too honest with us.
Have you heard about the new crow fire?
As I just talked to him, I heard him talking about it. I use it regularly. I'll see if it ever, if it actually works. I'll write on it. Permitting, we'll see if it ever comes about. I put that in, I think. Well, he, so I think it's totally, it's air cool where it's getting enough water rocks to be.
I have it on.
I don't know where they were talking about building, where they, place somebody else's. So this would be something where they still have water rights up, but this is my county. I did too, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of, there's a lot of hoops to jump. I think it's good for the future.
At least it's being taught. And maybe if they do one, they might even do two. Who knows?
I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. If you please rise and say the pledge with us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, a nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have any additions or deletions. Okay. Do I have somebody make a motion to approve the February twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five council meeting and the March third, two thousand twenty five work session?
I move we approve the February twenty fourth council meeting and the March third work session as presented.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Move and seconded. Any discussion on minutes? If not, I'll call for vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay? Motion carries.
Make sure you're awake over there.
Yeah, quick. Reports, councilwoman calling.
I'm sorry, I was out of town the last two weeks.
Oh, yeah, I bet you were.
I was.
I know you were, but being sorry, I'm not sure about.
We thought you'd bring us home. Did we get trinkets?
We let you back in, didn't we? Saved your seat.
Okay, councilwoman, nun.
Uh, yes, there's a couple of quick things here. The Veterans Park fundraising group of the Main Street has been added to the town of Glen Rock website, webpage, so there's probably a lot of interesting information there. This group is meeting weekly to continue organizing the April twenty sixth fundraising event. They are planning for groundbreaking to start April first and a future site sign should be coming soon. Small groups drive changes in community. What an excellent example this dedicated group is, and I see that we have some of them here tonight, and hopefully we'll get some more information from them.
Groundbreaking probably won't start till right around the first of May or just a little after the first of May, yeah.
Okay, well, that was the last.
I will get you guys updated on that. I spent quite a little time talking to Drew Bott today, so we can get things.
Good, bring it up there.
All running together, so we don't have any problems.
And then concerning the landfill, this evening I asked Danny Baker, the manager of the Greens Department at the transfer station, to come visit with the council and tell about the long-term plan for the Greens Department to be a source of recycling the materials that come into the transfer station and to establish recycling wood and greens material into useful things for our community to grow and free food for people. So items from the floor should include some interesting information from Mr. Baker. Thank you. That's it.
Okay. Councilman Kinkey.
I met with the steering committee. I was in a hospital district capacity, not as a council board member at the time, but we met with the steering committee and talked about maybe some future land that the hospital district owns, maybe working with the town on that for future historical monuments, museums, things like that. I don't know exactly what all, but something for the future, some things down the road over by the clinic. So it was, it was a good meeting, exciting things, ideas they had, and sounds good. I think everybody at the hospital board was receptive to it, and we plan on having a future discussion here and in the future.
Okay. Councilman Delgar.
I was not in Mexico, but I do not have a report.
Okay. Thank you.
Blame her anyway.
I didn't say I was in Mexico.
You were out of the country.
Yes. Evening, Mayor, Council. Welcome back, Judy. Um, I attended the cybersecurity training that was put on by emergency management, or offered by emergency management. It was, I thought it was a great training. I have took a lot of notes and been talking with Jared about some stuff, so we'll get you further informed on our discussions once we're done. And then just, just to let you know that I'm still waiting for, waiting on Karen to provide me a date for the quarterly commissioner's dinner. I checked with you guys and the people that responded, I sent back, and I just haven't heard a date yet, so that's all I have.
Okay. Kelly, treasurer.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Auditors are done. I did receive the completed financials. I have them in my office if anybody would like to take a look at them. They sent two copies because I also have them digital. If anybody wants them, I can send them. And starting to look at budget a little bit more and more, we'll get on to that really good once allocation letters come back, and that's all I have.
Okay.
John's still on vacation. I know that Public Works was doing some soft digging today on several of the sewer lines on the four and a half alley and over on the six and a half alley in the middle of Burt Street for continuization of the Keller and Ninth Street project, which will kick off here again in probably about thirty days. So I know they're busy with that.
They dug a couple of holes on Grove Street at the top there.
Yeah, they were, that's, they're, they're, they're doing soft digging, so they know what they're digging into. That's, that was the engineers for down, having, doing that today, so they can get those projects put together, so we don't have as many unknowns.
Me.
Your turn.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Senior Center closed up, gave them occupancy permit, looks pretty nice, a nice corridor they got there. They finished their concrete work outside, so that's all done. Weather helped them out. Still got compliance going on. Met with the DEQ today with asbestos. They just showed up, and it was the inspector.
We don't have any.
And the coordinator, so I got some pamphlets if you guys need them. We got a couple of things coming up later in the meeting. Planning commission, in our last meeting, they did vote to go to a five-member group. So me and Tammy will have to work together to come up with an ordinance and bring that back to you guys.
They're currently at seven?
What's that?
Is it at seven now?
Yeah, yeah, so that's what they voted to do. The Glen Rock Health Center meeting that Roy was talking about, uh, did go really well. Dustin kicked them off, and Kim Martin gave them some information about what we're planning, and then I kind of went through what we're hoping to do for a layout of the place, and it seemed like they were pretty receptive, had great, great questions and conversations, so we'll see, have to see how that goes. That's all I got.
Okay. Chief of Police, Calder.
Evening, Mayor and Council. It was kind of a long weekend with regionals basketball. We saw a lot of people come through town, but no issues, so that was really nice, although Thursday was a little concerning. I thought we were gonna have a couple of basketball teams weren't the fans here overnight, but they didn't close the roads. They left them open long enough for us to get them out of here, so that was really nice. Outside of that, been pulling my hair out with vacation, training, and sick leave. Everybody's doing it all at once, so we're working it out, but met with Kim from, for the Deer Creek Day stuff, starting those conversations. She's gonna start putting in for her permits, for street closures and things like that, so sounds like they've got a pretty good year this year planned, and then just starting the budgeting planning, so.
Okay, thank you. We don't have anybody from the fire department this evening, so we'll move on to.
They're doing a two-thirty training tonight.
Yeah, I knew that that was, I should have remembered that from FSA board meeting today. Items from the floor, is there anything, buddy, items from the floor this evening?
Hello, my name's Daniel Baker. Do I have to state my address?
No.
I don't have to do any of that, okay. I have some.
If you're in town, no.
Papers. Can I hand these to you guys real quick?
Sure. Give them to Lyle, he can bring them to us.
These were some photos that were presented by Margaret Nun during the last meeting, and they showcased some of the projects of the Glen Rock area. Solid Waste and Greens Department is spearheading. All of the materials in these photos were generated from upcycled yard waste, lawn waste, household trash. So these are all materials that both the town of Glen Rock and the town of Rolling Hills bring in daily to our facility, and we found avenues to turn that trash into somewhat of a treasure. And so currently, right now, I manage the Glen Rock area Greens Department, and we're trying to grow a foodless-free public garden. We have one acre allocated currently that produces produce the last two years, and I started in May first of last year, and we produce five hundred and fifty pounds of produce, all donated to the public. So far, we've taken it down to the public library, Boys and Girls Club, and then handouts to anybody that comes into the Greens Department to drop off their yard waste. And so this year, with the building of a ten-by-twelve greenhouse and a stationary and mobile chicken coop, which we had chickens on site, they were donated by me, and it's, it's a start in the right direction, producing fertilizer, so it's a perpetual cycle. We're looking at producing at least a thousand pounds or more produce this year, so we can grow about two thousand crops in that greenhouse, and then the rest can be direct sown by seed. So Margaret Nun asked me to come here and speak about our projects, and I wanted to make a proposal. There's a small chunk of land on the Greens Department site. It's three point four acres. Currently, the town of Glen Rock uses it as a holding facility for waste bins and street sweeper miscellaneous stuff, and I think they're occupying about maybe a tenth of that space. It's located close to the highway and our entrance to our facility, which would make it very, are you zooming in on that?
Yeah, I'm trying to.
Perfect.
Let's go up the hill, Lyle. Let's keep it up the hill.
Can I wait till you zoom in on that? Maybe I can describe it a little better.
Up the hill, Lyle.
Right there. Zoom in on that odd shape in the middle where your hand is.
There you go.
Oh, that's close you can get.
Okay, I got you.
Okay, so that's the city property, that small chunk there. I don't know what that shape is called, and we occupy everything around it. You can see that there's a, a employee access road to the west and the north, and then to the east is where the public garden is located and the holding area for a two-acre plot that we process wood chips, yard waste, manure, grass, sod, and we upcycle it into viable soil and soil amendments, landscaping materials like wood chips. And this small chunk that the city occupies would be a little more useful as an education center. So to continue this project, how long do I have to speak?
Till you're done.
Till you're done.
Okay, well, maybe I can backtrack. Can I backtrack just a tiny bit? Before I started here, I worked seven years at Wyoming Food for Thought Project. I was a horticulture specialist. I grew hydroponics, aquaponics, occupied five public community food-as-free gardens, some built by me, some by some partners, and I'm bringing that concept here. So when I started in May, there was already a garden plot on site, and it looked like it needed some more amendments, it needed more refining of materials to get it fertile enough and acceptable enough for the plants. And so we did soil samples. We got the samples back, and when our website gets finished, we'll put those online for everybody to view, so they know their food is safe if they want to eat off this plot of land. But we want to progress into a learning center because my experience working at Food for Thought Project is that we had a focus on kids K through twelve. Now, these kids were raised by families who were at or below the poverty line. They were working two jobs, days and nights, couldn't spend a lot of time, you know, teaching their kids simple things like gardening and where food comes from. And so one of the big projects that we wanted to allocate into these public gardens is teaching kids where the food comes from, from the beginning to the end. Soil and water into plant management, then you take that plant and turn it into food, and from there, how you get it on the plate. So I would like to bring that here as well, and that location on the map would be ADA accessible, people in wheelchairs would be able to get there. We might be able to gravel or pave a section in for parking. It would be accessible from the first gate, which means the public doesn't need access through the secondary gate where our equipment is, where our office is, and where some potentially hazardous materials are located. So that's my proposal, that we maybe purchase the land. I don't know what would be other, other way, other avenues for getting that property if it's.
It was just property that we kept at the time when the landfill became a district, and we kept that piece of property since the town owned all of it originally for the storage, like the garbage, garbage bins and a few, we had, there were some other left vehicles that had been stored up there that had been towed and tagged and stuff, and a lot of it's gone away. I just need to speak with our Public Works Director, and he gets back and stuff on how much area we need for our.
Absolutely.
For that stuff, and then we can, council could work on that, and we can come up with this decision before long, because if we're gonna do something with it, more than likely it'd be.
Pretty soon.
Something we turn over to the dump district as a piece, part of the property, I would think. It's government agency to government stuff, so, or they'll let you use it for ever and cut the size of it down for where John and those guys store stuff. We just gotta figure that out, because we don't have, we don't have storied space for all those bins and stuff.
Mm-hmm, and they look like they occasionally get shifted in and out.
Yeah.
For different uses.
Yeah, so that's something we can discuss and see if we can't work together and help you out.
All right, I really appreciate that. I think that's about all I got so far.
What all would you do in the education center for K?
Oh, absolutely. So as far as education goes with this plot of land, we talked about building some greenhouses that are thermally regulated under the ground. These would be half buried under the ground, half exposed to UV light, and sensory garden, so this takes place with anything that has an aromatic, tactile function or edible function, even medicinal plants, so focusing primarily on herbs. And also a building center. I have a little bit of carpentry background, beekeeping background, arboriculture background. I worked as an arborist for six, seven years, and so we'd be able to teach kids how to adopt pollinators into their space, both nocturnal and diurnal. We would also be able to teach them about soil health, and so what we're looking at is a location that is easily accessible and keeps people off of any location where we're operating heavy equipment and anything hazardous, any hazardous materials.
I'm a little older than K through twelve, but could I come get educated?
Absolutely, yes. Adults can come as well, so.
Do adult classes also.
It's my first time speaking. So absolutely, adults and children are both welcome to come. Anybody of any age is welcome to be a part of the project. My primary focus is kids, and the reason that it's kids is because kids are malleable, and it's at a finite point in their life where they're able to learn and accept a lot of things as they go into their mature stages of life, and we feel like, I shouldn't say we, I feel like there's a point where the parents may have failed, and maybe we can pick up the pieces and teach some of these kids how their food works, how the waste system works, and they can teach their kids.
What is your timeline for wanting this transaction done so that you can build your center?
Looks like there isn't a timeline at the moment, seasonally based anyways, and so right now, we're focused on growing the garden, terraforming the space, creating some shade. It's a desolate landscape up there of probolic sand dune that we're trying to stabilize using wood chips instead of grass, and so I would say within the next year, we can have a project set up and ready to rock and roll, and I'd like to use upcycled materials as per usual as we've been doing. This showcases that trash can be a treasure, and even your yard waste can have a second life, so I think that's kind of a reasonable timeframe where we can get things done and get a project drawn up.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other items from the floor this evening?
Good evening, Mr. Ayer, Councilman. I'm Shane Brow. I currently work for building, uh, Clary Building Corp. I have some reading material for you. I hear, I hear that you guys got a, obviously, we have a few buildings in, in the skyline of future building and everything, and I want to just provide some opportunity, what we can do to serve the community and give you, um, help you guys out and everything, so, um, one of the questions was, is know what the building, um, what the process is to quote future buildings for you guys, and what we need to do to maybe get something started that way? So that was my question that I had, I guess.
Usually on that, any of our building projects are usually set up and spec'd by our engineering firm and approved by, pre-approved for the meat budget and that, then we hold pre-bid meetings and then bid time to look at the, they can get the bid specs, you can get the bid specs and look at and bid on, and then there's usually an opening date of all sealed bids that come back to the town, and then the engineers look them all over to see if they meet the qualifications of what was in the design, and then we usually award the bids at that time, and it, there's bid bonds and everything else, depending on the size of the, size of the project and that, and design what the engineers have designed for us.
Is that like a website?
Usually, yeah, there's several of them that you can get. You can go on and get it through CEPI and I think the Building Center or something, or you can contact CEPI and they'll give them, give you copies of it when we're getting ready to do those projects.
I think they advertise, they advertise for, that they're asking for bids.
Yeah, they have.
On paper and on our website.
Two or three weeks before.
Okay, there's some of the stuff in the reading material. We have our engineers, that we have a Wyoming engineer back in our corporate office, and so all of our buildings, we can get stamped plans, unstamped plans, permitted plans, so we can make sure that we get the snow load and all the, all the structures set for, for what most towns and most municipalities run, so, absolutely so. There's some reading material there. I have more brochures if you guys need something. We do, um, part, we do a lot of park stuff, shelters, anything that's post, or post-frame construction, and, um, we can go wood, but we do more like metal siding, and then, but we can go wood, wood siding or whatever you get. Each one has its own different generic piece to that, so, um, we're here in town, so I want to support you guys the best we can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other items from the floor this evening? If not, we'll move on. There is no old business. We'll move into new business, and it's a reappointment for the town of Glen Rock for the Tourism Board and to reappoint Candace Benedetta. I think she wants to talk to us. You want your sentence extended?
Not really, but, but we're doing a lot of good work on the Tourism Board. We have a brand-new board, and I'm the treasurer now, so I would just like to be reappointed. I'm actually serving a partial term right now, so this would be my first full term in July.
Well, we're very, I'm very happy that you show interest to stay on that board.
I am too. You have very good ideas.
So is there a motion to reappoint Candace to the Tourism Board?
I move we reappoint Candace to the Tourism Board.
Is there a second?
Go ahead, Judy.
I'll second.
They moved and seconded. Any discussion?
How long is this a term? Is it a two-year, four-year?
I think it's a three-year.
Three-year?
Three-year.
Doesn't matter, I was just curious.
Okay, any other discussion? Hurry, no, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay? Motion carries. Our next.
Thanks, Candace.
Uh, our next order of business is a very long list of malt beverage permits and fun, and catering permits for different projects and stuff going on with the veterans, with Main Street, Main Street at, for the summer series at the, at the square, and some catering for the veterans, and a couple of, I think there's a one also for fundraiser.
Booster club, I think.
Booster club and all that, and if nobody has a problem, if you've read through them, would somebody like to make a motion to approve all of them, unless you want to do them all one at a time?
Do we need to name them by name, or can I say, make a motion to approve this list of?
You can say, make a motion to approve this list of seven applications.
Applications for twenty-four hour catering permit and open container permit as presented. I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Did, did anybody see anything wrong with them? Mike didn't. I read them all.
They look very standard.
Yeah, I think they're, they're all getting in ahead of time, so we, trying to get one done at the last minute, and we appreciate all of them that are gonna be doing, up and do events that are coming up this spring, and I think it'd be a good time, so.
Any of the people with the permits have any questions of us before we vote? Do any of the people with the permits have any questions of us before we vote? Hearing none.
Hearing none?
Can I say something? I am so grateful, our groups, all of the groups and the, the bars have been so good. They've just been so good at getting their stuff in early and it is very helpful for me, so thank you guys.
Yep. If there's not any discussion or anything else, I will call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed by nay? Motion carries? Making my way through that list. The next order of business.
Page 20. Yeah, that's way down there.
Mine doesn't say page, I got to go up and down.
Ordinance number 752, which is an ordinance amending minor boundary adjustment, adjustments whereas the governing body of the town of Glen Rock wishes to simplify process of minor boundary changes and whereas the Planning and Zoning Commission has approved the following verbiage to be added to the Glen Rock Town Code, be it ordained by the governing body of the town of Glen Rock, Wyoming, that we pass this minor boundary change. And I'm not going to read it.
Oh, come on Bruce.
You really want to be that bored?
It's only three pages. Come on Bruce.
What?
You could read fast.
No, I don't.
Okay, forget it then.
So is there a motion to approve ordinance number 752? We only have to do this once.
I move we approve ordinance 752 as presented.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion on it? Did everybody get a chance to read it?
It's a lot.
It's a lot, yes it is.
It's confusing, but it's a lot.
Yeah, and there's a lot, it, it helps with some of the stuff that's a lot, so you don't have to vacate and replat some minor adjustments, it's easy to take.
Simplifies that.
Yeah, there it does.
It simplifies the lot, of the law.
I think it's a good ordinance. I think it can move things maybe faster and easier and clearer for everyone to understand what's going on. I like it.
I actually think this one is going to require.
It's a three.
Is it going to take three, two? All right, so this will be first reading. So any other discussion? What?
Seconded that?
I did.
You did, okay, thanks. I was, I was thinking about.
I'm not going to second.
First and only reading. Thank you.
Okay. There's no other discussion, I'll call for a vote for first reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed by nay? Motion carries? Our next.
Twenty-six.
He's just asking for it.
Ordinance number 753, an ordinance approving the final plat of Danaher Court additions lot 13 through 15, whereas the town of Glen Rock intent to final vacation and replat of the Danaher Court additions lots 1 through 6 as Danaher's Court additions lot 13, 14 and 15, more or less consisting of all those numbers and settings, situating them being portions of the section southwest, quarter section of, quarter section 32 Township, yeah, 34 North Range, 75 West, 6th Principal, median, covers County Wyoming, creating lots 13, 14 and 15 subdivision, the plat. And whereas the plat consists of previous platted land located within the town of Glen Rock and whereas the plat requires approval by ordinance, whereas the town Glen Rock Planning and zoning recommendation, recommendations to the town approve this request to be platted in the above referenced property, where the governing body of the town of Glen Rock finds this, find that above a description plat should be approved, now be therefore be adained the governing body of the town of Glen Rock and the final plat of the Danaher Court additions lots 13 through 15 hereby be approved. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect, effective from and after passage of this applications pursuant to law, passed and approved for first reading the 10th day of March 2025. Is there a motion?
I move we pass ordinance 753.
On first reading.
On first reading.
First and final.
I thought we had to do it three times. Can you guys make up your mind?
No.
Not on a minor, not on a minor replat.
Okay. Okay.
We have the drawing. I don't know if, Hummer, if you or Penny have seen it or not, but with, with us doing this, we will be able to get the mylar made and then if you want to hang around right after the meeting, I can show you what we got charged for getting that done. It was very, very reasonable and we can discuss how, we'll take care of that. But if there's, if there's no other discussion on this, I will call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed by nay? Motion carries? I believe our next order of business is bills and claims. Is there a motion?
We pay our bills.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussions on bills and claims?
Since how, see Judy and I and Russ have a bill in here, how do we go about voting on this?
It's not technically, it's, it's not a reimbursement bill to us, it's just because we were there, so we don't have to.
You can vote on this one.
We can vote on this one.
Otherwise, all you guys got to move and then Roy and I get to decide.
Oh, that sounds really exciting.
But no, you can't leave.
Let's go in the back room, see what they do.
Yep. All right. Any other discussion on bills and claims? If not, I will call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed by nay? Motion carries? Is there anything else to come before this council meeting this evening from either council or the chamber?
Did we get anywhere with, just a question, I just, did we get anywhere with the, looking at the building on the corner for code compliance for the doors?
Well, I've discussed that. We've got, got to get numbers together, so I've talked to Ray, the CPI, to figure out what we, so we can be able to bid that out to get all those doors made.
I just didn't know if we had gotten there yet.
Yeah, we've, we've been discussing, adding several things since we really, actually all public access doors into that building are going to need to be done that way.
On the Commerce Block, right?
On the Commerce.
Commerce Block, the building on the corner, the Commerce? You know what I'm talking about, Lyle.
Addams and Clary.
Yeah, we're working on those.
Cool.
We're going to need a budget number. But anything else? If not, I'll ask somebody to make a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn the meeting.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.